Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our July 9th City Council Study Session. We'll start off with your call.
Deputy Mayor Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember Trautmann will.
She's coming.
Okay, Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Okay. I don't believe we have any announcements, reports, or presentations. Agenda item, first item on the list is Johnson Sewer Payback Agreement.
Evening, councilmembers, mayor. My name is Bob Doyle, I'm the sewer utility engineer, and tonight I'm going to give you a brief review of payback agreements, and then we'll look specifically at an agreement that we'll be considering tonight and then potentially, you know, improving next week. So, sometimes when a development occurs in the city, the developers are required to extend public facilities to serve that, whether it be a sewer main, or a water main, or streets, or a storm line. And oftentimes, those improvements don't just benefit the property that's being developed, but also could potentially develop or benefit the properties, you know, adjacent to it. For instance, if a water line goes down the center of a street, the property opposite that, if it's not currently developed, can eventually tap into that. So they receive some benefit from those. The payback agreement is, gives the city and the developer the ability to, in the future, have the developer get reimbursed for some of the expenses of that extension. So that's what we're discussing. In this particular case, the owner of the parcel, it's kind of the north, there are six parcels up to the east of I Street, northeast, and the owner of the parcel that's in kind of the north center is building a house, an additional house on that parcel, and as such, they're required to extend the sewer. And the way that they've extended it is in a way that could serve all of those six parcels. So currently, none of them are, well, right now, two of them are on sewer, but prior to this extension, none of them are on sewer. So there's, so he received a certain benefit from that, Mr. Johnson, and the other properties also potentially benefit from that. So, the purpose of this payback agreement is for Mr. and Mrs. Johnson to get reimbursed for a proportionate share of that, of the cost of that extension. So, appears generally, the formal process that we go through, really, the process for a payback agreement starts at pre-application stage, where we're discussing it with the developer as to what extensions will be required, and the potential to get, you know, possibly reimbursed for those. It formally starts with the application, with the payback application, and then there's a variety of things that they're required to submit, and that the city goes through and does some review and evaluation and processing of those things. For this particular project, the project had been constructed, the costs, all the project costs have been submitted to the city, and so we're to the point now where this notification has been made to the properties. And so these are all the tasks or parts of the process that have been completed, down to the notifying the benefiting properties, that there'll be, would be potentially assessed a fee. The next couple steps are scheduled for next week, holding a public hearing and considering or considering an ordinance in order to allow the city to enter into that payback agreement. So those are scheduled for next week's council meeting. And then the final two steps are recording, they're administrative steps in order to execute the agreement. For this particular extension, the, it was a 300-foot sewer extension with a couple of manholes, there were some design costs, you know, incurred as part of that, some repaving on I Street, and the total project cost came up to be about $76,000. And for this particular configured, there are a variety of ways to assess how each of the properties benefit. In this case, because these properties could potentially be subdivided, or possibly have multifamily housing built on them, the benefit is related to the size of the parcel. And so in this case, the reimbursement was distributed based on the areas of the parcel. And so it comes out to be, you know, as shown up here, 13,000, anywhere from 10,000 to 18,000 per parcel. Mr. Johnson's parcel, you can see there's a zero underneath there, because he's the one who developed the project, he doesn't reimburse himself, so that's reflected in the agreement. There's also an oddity in this particular development is, the parcel to the upper right, the northeast parcel, is a Mr. KiHurya, and he worked with Mr. Johnson, he was anxious to get connected to sewer and wanted to kind of help out with the process, and so he worked with Mr. Johnson to fund the extension. And so that, part of that agreement was that he wouldn't seek reimbursement from him, and that's reflected in the agreement that you have on the, have in your packet.
Councilmember Wells?
Okay, so, basically, then, the-
I can go back.
Yeah, the two residents on the top, middle, and right lot have invested about $33,000 in this project, and the other 43 is going to be picked up by the other four lots?
Yes, yes.
So can I assume that in lot northwest, that residence is not on sewer currently?
Correct, yes. They're currently on septic system.
Why would you want to go on sewer when you have septic, and it's kind of free?
Well, there's a couple of occasions, one is that the septic system fails, that would be, that would be an issue where you would have to connect the sewer, or if you wanted to subdivide your parcel or build a larger building, which is actually what Mr. Johnson was doing, and they required that.
So, to summarize, if you're, if you have a septic tank and you want to subdivide an appropriate-sized lot, at this point, if you're not on septic, then you have to put, you have to go to sewer?
Generally, if it's available.
It depends, I mean, depends upon the size of the lot that you're creating, whether or not you're within 200 feet of the existing sewer, because our code requires if you're within 200 feet of sewer, that you connect. And so, depending upon the size of the lot, and the issue of the existing sewer, and whether or not the new lot sizes could actually facilitate a septic system or not, that's all going to play into that decision, so it's case by case.
Okay.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Bob, so, all these administrative work by the city, I'm sure we get a fee back ourselves? How is that, how is that regulated?
We, we have a fee that we charge at the, during the process, when they make a formal application, there's a, it's a little bit over $2,500 fee that is paid when the application for the payback is.
And that covers all our expenses?
Well, we have not tracked the expenses to, we don't have a billing system set up to track the expenses for payback, for each payback, so.
And they're so, this is the first payback in many, many, many years, right?
We have one approximately two years ago, and then, we've had a few in my, maybe five in my 10 years here, so, there's not a lot of them, and they vary in size and, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trautmann?
What is the cost for them hooking up to sewer, and is, do we get a kickback from that?
Their, their cost for connecting, like, a new connection to sewer, it depends, for a single-family home, it is, there's a permit fee, which is a couple hundred dollars, and then there's also a system development charge, which is approximately $2,400 at this point.
Any other questions? Thank you, Robert, appreciate it. Maybe the next one we're going to talk about is 3B, which is Ordinance Number 6686.
Good evening, Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development. Ordinance Number 6686 is a discussion item for a study session this evening, it's also listed on the projected agenda for council action next week, if council's comfortable this evening with moving it forward. The cover memo provided in your packet describes a little bit of the background of Ordinance 6686, and it's the Construction Sales Tax Exemption section of the city's code. And while it's called an exemption, it's probably, it functions more like a rebate, and really, it applies to different types of projects throughout the city, construction projects where a developer or contractor that's spending money on building new, or investing in existing buildings to expand them or change their use, can apply to the city for a rebate of some of the sales tax that they pay on construction products. So if they're buying concrete, and they're buying lumber, and they're buying supplies, whatever they need for that project, those costs, they're eligible to seek a reimbursement from the city for the portion of the sales tax that comes to the city. So when you're paying sales tax, it gets spread out into lots of different areas, and the city is just one recipient of sales tax dollars. So the portion that comes to the city, that's what the developer can apply for and receive a rebate for up to $100,000. The summary that's provided in the packet also lays out a few of the basic eligibility components to this program. So it's not any project anywhere, it is limited to different zoning designations within the city, so the downtown urban center zone, the C3 and C4 commercial zones, as well as the M1 and M2 industrial zones. And then within each of those zones, there's different types of projects that can qualify. In the downtown urban center, for example, there's a, you can qualify if you're constructing multifamily that has in excess of 50 dwelling units. And a different zoning designation, like the M1 or M2 zones, you can expand an existing commercial facility by, I think it's 25,000 square feet, and potentially qualify as well. And then there's change of use, so, for example, changing a warehouse over to manufacturing would give, would provide a qualification as well. So, the city code is pretty detailed, it's a couple pages long, different types of projects in different zoning designations. This goes back to a conversation that we had a month, month and a half ago, about different types of incentives on the city of Auburn. Ordinance 6686 was adopted by council back in September of 2011. Embedded in that language is a sunset clause, it's actually an expired program, it's still in city code, but it includes provision that says that this program will expire four years from the date that it went into effect. So technically, it expired on September 19th, 2015. What the, what Ordinance 6686 proposes to do is strike the language that includes the sunset provision. It also has a, I think, a rather technical modification of striking out the EP zoning designation, since that zoning designation isn't, isn't in place anymore. There's been one project that has applied for the Construction Sales Tax Exemption rebate, and that was the developer of the TREC property. So despite the fact that it's only been used once, one of the things that, from a staff perspective, that we think is advantageous to the program, is the package of incentives that you can lay out to different types of developers, and different owners of buildings who are looking to invest in their buildings. So even though it may not be heavily used, it's nice when you can say to a potential customer, "Here are 10 different things you can choose from." And they may only choose three of those, but that's really because they're able to customize their own incentive package, some that work for them and some that aren't as attractive to other folks. So, we're recommending that we bring Ordinance 6686 forward to City Council and remove the language that sunsetted the program.
Any questions for Jeff on this subject? Councilmember Wells?
So, we've only used it once in the near past, I don't know if that works, but, how much did that actually cost us with the TREC building?
Well, the rebate check that we provided back to those, that developer, was just north of $24,000.
Councilmember Wells?
In the immediate, another immediate past, in the recent past, or in the past, since I've been on the council, we, we did an ordinance to affirm that all of our construction sales tax would go to local roads. And so, and that's an area that we seem to struggle with, with finding revenue, though $24,000 in the last four or five years isn't really a lot, but it's, I'd like some discussion among us as to what, you know, what was our intent in protecting the construction sales tax and helping us with roads, and do we see this as slippery slope? And if it's an incentive, it's only been used once, is it really an incentive? And so I'd be interested in what my fellow council members think about this particular thing.
Councilmember Holman?
Well, the fact that we limited it to 20%, it's a good demonstration by the city as an incentive. State law and state constitution severely limit the types of incentives that a city can apply to use to attract good-quality developers, good-quality projects. For instance, in Washington State, we can't do incremental tax financing, which our colleagues in other states use all the time. So, this is one of the few incentives that we can do to encourage things like changing our warehouses, which have few employees, no tax returning to the city, and low-paying jobs, to convert over to manufacturing, which is higher-paying jobs, more jobs, one of the things that we have as a goal in the city. And new development, proper development, for businesses, when the business comes to Auburn, like the TREC, they've paid back that $24,000 many times over in other taxes that they've, that it's generated. So to me, it's a way of demonstrating good faith of our city in attracting top-tier developers and top-tier industry.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Yeah, if you look on page 39 of 58, it addresses Ordinance 6686, and the first whereas at the top, John, more or less encapsulates your discussion a moment ago.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wells?
Oh, no, I think you had a question.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Thank you. I think also, we do have limitations as to the number of residential units, the square footage of the facilities and such, so, it's not an open book, if you will, for everything. So I think our limitations are good, and maybe perhaps we should just kind of revisit that as we go along, to make sure we're kind of set in our minds that those are the proper limitations. I think looking at minimum dwelling units, minimum of 50 dwelling units seems good, but perhaps we might want to look at increasing that to minimum of 100 units, I don't know. Just for open discussion of looking at those limitations as to whether or not those are the proper limitations, or they should be adjusted, it's probably worth a, some conversation as well.
Councilmember Wells?
Jeff, I'd be interested in what other, in the future, presentation, on what other incentives for, our, our package of incentives that we provide for new and renovated construction.
Yeah, that's something that we did create a matrix that showed how we compare with some of those other jurisdictions, and we can take that, because it does really show what that list is, but we can expand it for another column to fill in more detail about what each of those programs are.
That would be helpful, because if this is an incentive that we've only had to use, or it's only been accessed once, then we need to look at what our whole menu is, and, and see how, what other ones are being accessed, so that we have a total picture.
Councilmember Brown? Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jeff, could you discuss the merits of eliminating the sunset provision as opposed to reinstating a future sunset date? And the reason I ask that question is, I know that in the state of Washington, we have billions, maybe $6 billion annually, in tax incentives, some of which no longer are incentivizing the behaviors and economic activities that the legislature had intended, but once they are there, it's very hard to get rid of tax incentives, whether they're worthy or not. So I'm curious, it seems that a sunset gives a legislative body or council the opportunity to evaluate the merits of a given incentive for the future. Why eliminate it and not provide a future date?
Yeah, so typically, and this is, this is not by law, it's been by preference, Auburn's preference, whenever we've included sunset provisions in an ordinance, it's typically to test it, and see if it works, see if there's value in having it. And there's no reason, it's certainly on the table for council to say, "You know what, we want to see an ordinance come out, but we want to keep a sunset provision in there." There's, there's, there's nothing holding council back from taking that approach. Staff, myself, bringing this forward to eliminate the sunset provision is really about following past practice of testing out an incentive program, seeing if it works or not, seeing if there's value, and then, once you get past that, that period of time where you've tested it, choosing to eliminate it and keep the program in perpetuity, or not. So it really comes from a pattern, more than whether there's a pro or a con. I do want to say that I think that, that the message of incentives like this have out in the community are, "We are a friendly place to work." So that's the important message, from a staff perspective, of bringing this back forward and saying, you know, "We had a sunset provision, this is a valuable program to keep in place." It's really about showing folks out there that Auburn is a friendly place to come and do business, and there's lots of things to offer. And you can still accomplish that if there's, if a sunset provision remains in place.
I would say perhaps not quite as strong a message in that way, and were it not for the infrequency of the utilization of this particular incentive, I would have more concerns about that, so. But it was just a question about the philosophy, so, thank you.
Councilmember Trautmann?
No, I've just answered my own question. I was wondering, the question, the statement that Mr. Holman stated about bringing in more industrial manufacturer companies into our city and stuff, and I found what I was looking for in our documents, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jen. On this part of the program, I will turn the meeting over to our focus area chair for Municipal Services, and that is Councilmember Larry Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome.
This Municipal Services discussion item, for A, surrender firearms protocols, Chief Pearson is going to give us a presentation on the protocols for surrendering firearms, and I surrender.
I'd like to be first to welcome Chief Pearson-
Thank you very much.
...in his first appearance as chief.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. All right, I did provide some-
Yes, I did, Councilmember Trautmann.
But I think one thing that we need to do, since he is our chief, this message on his phone needs to be changed, because it doesn't say he's chief.
I know, I'm still working on that, those logistics, kind of, so, thanks to all-
Welcome to the table.
Okay, well, my understanding is, is, I wanted a presentation on the surrendering, surrendering of the firearms protocol, and I'm going to go a little bit more in-depth and use some of the material that I gave you, but I want to go over it rather quickly, because I think this stuff will generate a lot of conversations and questions, and I want to leave plenty of time for that, so. When it comes to firearms, here in the state of Washington, everyone has that Second Amendment right to have and possess firearms in your business, in your home, and you don't need a concealed weapons permit to actually have a firearm in your house or in your place in business. However, if you carry in the state of Washington unconcealed, you actually have to have a permit. Now, we do have an open carry here in the United States, and here in this state, you can have firearm open carry. We've come across several folks that have firearms open carry, which means it's just on your hip and out in public, okay? However, somebody convicted of a felony, or anyone convicted of any DV misdemeanors committed after July 1993, coercion, stalking, reckless endangerment, criminal trespass, violation of protection, or no contact order, or had been involuntarily committed, or those under the 18 are prohibited from having firearms. Now, we do get on occasion where we are in possession of a firearm at the city police department, in our evidence room, and somebody is requesting to get their gun back. We, once we get that request, our evidence technicians will quickly begin to do a background on this person to determine if they are allowed to even have the firearm back. And so there are all these reasons why they can't have a firearm, some are addition, if you've used a firearm and you're a convicted felon and under the age of 18, and all the rest that go with that. If we determine that those are there, and you've had some domestic violence convictions as well, we will prohibit you from having that firearm. Now, if we're unsure, because sometimes, this law has gotten very convoluted over the years, we will actually forward all that information to our legal team, who then take a look at that, and then give us guidance on whether we should give somebody their firearm back. So, at the police department level, we're able to make that determination. Now, there is an extreme risk protection order that's in place, and it can happen a couple of ways. It can be ordered by the court, or it can be what's referred to as ex parte, which also means a police officer can petition the court to have somebody's firearms removed. Now, if a judge orders it, typically what will happen in today's realm, in our district court, is if you are found to have probable cause to have committed domestic violence, a judge will issue an order prohibiting you from contacting the protected person, will prohibit you from stalking, harassing, or making contact with, and then typically, what will happen now is the judge will order that person to surrender all firearms that they have. That person now has, I think, 10, 10 days or so to respond to that order. So what happens is, is they, they do two things, they collect their firearms and bring it to the local police department, and I'll tell you how we take those in, or they fill out another form that's- Or they fill out another form that says, I don't have any firearms to deliver. Now, they have to do one or the other. If they fail to do one of those, then they're actually shown to not have fulfilled the order and could be brought in front of the judge again. At this point, the judge could actually, if they continue to fail to fulfill that either of those two options, the judge then could order them actually to be, remain in custody. Again, the whole idea behind that is to protect persons from domestic violence, especially as a result to firearms. So as of today, we have received from about a year, 31 firearms that we have collected under a, in order. We have not done any ex parte orders, they've been all done by a judge's order given a no contact order. 22 of those 31s we've actually returned. So that means there's some convictions in there, some folks didn't get their firearms returned to them. Now, one of the, one of the things that's interesting about this is the first time I've, I've seen this, and we have not done it yet here at the police department. But that is, is if we develop probable cause, and if somebody does have firearms but they're failing to surrender, we then would have to actually complete a search warrant in order to get that. But what's interesting in the law, it says that we can petition for a search warrant, but it doesn't actually indicate what crime it's committed. And so the only thing I can assume at this point is it's some kind of contempt of court, but there's a provision right in this law that allows us to write a search warrant and then be able to go in and get those firearms. So, once the court case is adjudicated, if there is a conviction, the person will never get their firearm back, and they'll probably lose their rights to possess a firearm. Or they'll be found not guilty, or the case will get dismissed, in which they can now come back and get their, petition to get their firearm back. When we take the firearms in, we usually give them a receipt, where they go into our evidence room, and we wait for court direction and prosecutor direction on whether, what we do with the firearm from that point. So they stay in our, our little custody until that happens, so.
Bill, how do you determine probable cause to go in and issue a search warrant? How do you know that the person has any weapons? Or is it just speculation?
Correct. Well, a lot of times, that's how crimes do start, as we speculate that there's something going on, and so you begin to investigate. We'll use witnesses, credible witnesses, to try to determine if that's there. If we could either, we could do an undercover operation to determine that someone who have credible stance through the Aguliar Spinelli prong that we, in order to make somebody credible, we'll send them in, we can do it that way. Or we just, somebody sees them, a lot of times these folks nowadays will put themselves on social media holding the gun. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we can determine, but it's mere investigating. And so a lot of times, the petition person or the victim will tell us, he's got guns, he's got guns, this is what they are. We can determine that maybe somebody's got guns registered to them. But when you write a search warrant to go into someone's home, you have to be able to articulate that, that the firearms are there, more likely than not, and they're there now. And so that's difficult to do at times.
It is. Councilmember Wales, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. So I, I have a wonderful husband, and I have no domestic violence, for those people who are watching. But if something should happen, and the judge orders him to turn over his weapons, and I'm the spouse, and he turns over five of his seven, and I'm scared to death, then is that going to be sufficient if I call and say, I think that he has two more guns? Though I'm a party to this whole thing, is that sufficient?
Well, when it comes to putting together probable cause, you know, probable cause is this, it's this moving organism. All right? So I don't want to get into this legal mumbo jumbo on how we determine probable cause. But there, it's, it's really not something that's clear and bright. And so there's a lot of factors that would go into that. And so it's really difficult to say that one fact pattern would lead us to believe there. It would never have to be a lot of background on you, you know, have you ever lied to law enforcement before? I mean, there's a lot of different things that we would go through to determine whether you were credible. More than likely or not, if you were in the house, I'd tell you to, when he's not there, go get the guns and bring them to us. Because that's, you could do that.
Okay.
I'll mention that to Mike.
Councilmember Wales.
Hey, after the person has turned over his guns and has been found guilty and goes to jail for 35 years, how do you get rid of the guns you have?
Well, we used to sell them to a contracted firearms dealer. But probably about two years ago, Chief Lee and I decided not to do that any longer. And so now, all firearms that we do not return, we destroy.
Yes, Councilmember Wales.
So you, you get credible information, and you request a search warrant, and you have to get it approved by a judge. What's the turnaround time between you deciding that it's good and contacting a judge and getting the authorization from a judge?
Typically, when a judge signs a warrant, other than some specific drug warrants, they'll give you three days to execute the warrant. I would say when it comes to getting firearms and creating safety, soon as we got the warrant, we would probably put a plan in place and do our best to get the gun out as soon as we could. It's, it's all about safety.
How, does it, is it hard to contact a judge?
No, we haven't.
They're open all night long?
They're open all night long. You got to wake some, a few of them up, but they'll wake up.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
If I could add just one thing to what the chief said, a little clarification. When we respond to people with firearms applications or concealed weapons, we don't make the determination, we don't make the determination that they may or may not have a firearm or a pistol license. What we do is we determine whether or not they're statutorily allowed or statutorily prohibited. The city employee decides if somebody gets to have a gun or not. It's just state law. And so the responses back are, you know, the statute prohibits us from returning these firearms to you. What we do in those cases, we have a third party, a three-party agreement, that the owner can transfer their interest in that firearm to somebody else that's allowed to have it. And so we provide them with a contract that says they're giving up, they're transferring that to somebody who's allowed to have it. And, and it also includes some identification provisions that help protect the city.
Yes, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Is surrendering the firearms also includes surrendering all of their ammunition along with it?
No. Only the firearm.
I think there's no other questions at this point. Thank you very much, Chief. And at this point, I'll relinquish the gavel back to the Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think the only item left on the agenda to discuss is our matrix. I don't believe we have any other discussion items or new business. So we do have still some TBDs out there. And municipal services. Community court, anything new on that one?
No, we do not have anything on that, but I will, is there a recommendation? Yes.
So I am going to go up to the Redmond Community Court and witness one of their sessions in August. And then it falls under HR, it falls under Director Martenson, and so we'll be putting together a presentation after that, and perhaps have Judge Tucker or one of the other judges attend as well.
Okay. So we would anticipate something maybe in September?
And the park rules?
I guess, I will make a call to Dana, would that be appropriate?
No, actually, it's-
So just Daryl?
It's Daryl. Yeah, Daryl was going to reach out to you, he just wanted to know what it was you wanted because park signs and park rules were brought to council about a year, maybe almost two years ago. And all of the signs within all of the parks were changed out at that time. So he was just trying to get an understanding of what you were looking for.
I brought this up at, at the last council, at the last session, and a lot, most of the, our park rules are tacked onto a tree. And we want them, we want to discuss, we need them more visible. And I think we should also review the park rules to see if everything is still current in our minds as council. So that was my-
Okay, so that was done, like I said, about two years ago, so they are as current as the discussion from two years ago.
Like I was down at the Game Farm Park for, for a function, and so I'm walking into the shelter area, and I see a sign tacked up in the tree. I was obviously looking for the park rules because of this. But tacked on a tree, I don't think cuts it. It's got to be more visible because branches could be in the way, et cetera, et cetera. Park rules that I've seen in other parks, they're generally, as you walk in into the park area, so, those are things that need to be discussed.
And I, I have to agree with Mr. Pelosi because I was, two weeks ago, we were playing bocce, right there at the bocce court. And the sign, the park rules are right there, but they're so small. And as some elderly people were walking, I say elderly, my age, were walking up to the bocce court, this young man comes whipping on his bicycle. He must have been about 20 or something like that, and he just almost ran over two of the people on the sidewalk. And a couple of the other guys yelled at him, told him to slow down, and he just did his finger and kept on going and went around and did wheelies in front of the community center. So Brian just happened to be in the park, and he came over and talked to us a little bit, and I asked him about the park rules. And he goes, well, Mrs. Trout, they're right here. So they are right there, but they're so small print that you really have to go up to them to read all the rules. But some of these kids don't take the time to read the rules. If we could have signs that say, slow down, or that says that bicycles can go on the sidewalk, but they have to go slowly or walk your bicycles and skateboards as well. But this young man didn't care who was on the sidewalk.
You could talk to Daryl and find out if there's, you know, maybe get some input from some of the other council members, that might work.
Okay.
Okay, I think that, while we have one more TBD, and that's under finance.
It is, and that's about the annexation on islands and peninsulas. I have one more person I need to have a conversation with, and it's an assistant state AG for the Boundary Review Board.
Maybe we'll see a date there pretty soon. Are there any other items that need, Councilmember Pelosi? Under municipal services, we need to add fireworks review. And as far as the date, we were talking, Larry and I were talking to the mayor tonight. It depends on when the police are going to, and the fire department, I guess, when they're, is the fire department going to give a report? So, put it out, put it out a couple of months, Bob, I guess.
Beady in there.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm going to take advantage of the new guy effect here. One of the things I'm a little concerned about in study sessions especially is making sure that council is acting as a body, not individually. I said it to you at our Jurassic Parliament hearing in here a month or so ago. So when one council member makes a suggestion, what I would ask for is for you either to ask if that's the consensus of the body, or see if there's going to be a motion and a second and a vote. It doesn't have to be motion and a second and a vote. But this way, the clerk knows that the council is directing that this be added to the matrix.
To be kind of a incentive.
So we need to see four heads nodding.
I, I think that's a good thing to add, a review, but within a reasonable amount of time, a couple of months.
Right.
Everybody pretty much agree on that? Councilmember Wales?
I think a review would be good, and I also think that the other item that we had to the matrix would be also good for a review, the sign, the, the rules for parks. So both of those. Yeah.
Okay. Any other items that should be added to the matrix? All right, with that, and, yes, I'm sorry.
I was going to reach out to Dave Martin to come and share a little bit more about the firearms, but I wanted to see what Bill was going to present before I add it to my agenda. But we're going to meet with Dana Thursday, so I'll talk to her about it.
This is for the domestic violence?
This is for domestic violence.
Okay, well, the notice was before the council, it was adjourned.